The November 21st, 2022 City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no minutes to approve, and that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards, and we have an introduction. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'll take this opportunity to introduce three new employees. I'd ask that Ms. Shannon Green, please stand up. Ms. Shannon Green started in late October in the Police Division. She's our new Administrative Assistant. Since 2000, she's worked at Kodak Eastman. Prior to that, from 1993 to 2000, she was at the City of Moraine, where she held various roles, but had worked directly with the city manager and then also the police chief there. And so Ms. Green is a very empathetic person who is very detailed-oriented, and I think that she has what it takes to keep Chief Oldhouse in line. So, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. The next person that we have is our new City Planner. This is Michael Hamus. He goes by Mike. Mike, since 2002, has been at the City of Moraine as well. He holds the AICP designation, is very well-qualified to take us on a good journey of where we need to go with planning, and so we're going to get him deep into some of those policy revisions that we've been wanting to investigate, thinking about, I won't list them off, we know what they are, they're numerous. And so, very excited to have Mike onboard. He will oversee the zoning and planning administrator, and then also property maintenance, commercial, and residential functions. Mike, is there anything that you'd like to share?
I've been here a week, I've been made so welcome, and I've met some of you already, but for the rest of you, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Very good first impression when I met him, he was walking into a Rotary meeting.
That's right, that's right. He did come with me to Rotary last week, and he got to meet a couple Council members, which was nice. And then, of course, we want him out in front of the business community as well. The next person that we have is James Cabonce, and James is our new Park and Rec Mechanic. Prior, he was at Vandelia Rental Crown Lift Trucks as well. He's got a good background and technical capability. I think that he said he's been turning wrenches since he was 14. What? Twelve, okay, who's counting?
Yeah, who's counting?
He also lives in Butler Township, and so just, you can tell he's a very positive guy. He's got a bachelor's degree as well, and we're just really excited to have him onboard. He has big shoes to fill, so, and I'm sure that the guys have been stacking up equipment where, I know immediately, there were some real puzzlers that he solved in the first week, and so that put a good impression out there. Is that about right? Yeah, Rudy says yes. So, thank you very much. I will not, you don't have to stay for the rest. You're dismissed if you'd like to. Of course, it's a public meeting, so you're welcome to stay if you're interested. No pressure. Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Went, was he told he had to stay for 40 years, like our previous mechanic in the Parks and Rec Department?
I think, I think he's got that in him.
All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. As you know, Chuck Smith, 825 Old Farm Court, Vandelia. I usually come to talk to you about bicycling. Today, I'm here regarding a variance request, which is number 14B in today's agenda. And I wanted to introduce Andrew Kuss of Lifetime Quality Solar. He's here along with me to cover any questions that you have. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to add anything, or anything?
I just, you know, this is my, my third time coming, and it's always, it's always a pleasure. I've been reworking the engineering plans for his job to make sure everything is exactly up to code, and I'm ready to hit the ground running and make this right. And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
All right. Thanks for coming. Is there anyone else that'd like to make a comment? Make your way up.
Tom Grace, 10400 North Castle Road. Getting used to this. I knew you guys missed me last time I was out of town. This is a good night to be here. Start with important things first. I know the City Council was looking at getting a legal opinion on potential ways to mitigate warehousing within the city limits, and had been asked by residents to look at options, to look into things that might be done to do that, you know, through zoning, changing zoning code or rezoning properties. Was curious as to, a couple weeks ago, I guess it's been a month ago, there was a scheduled executive session to discuss legal issues that got canceled, assuming that has been held since then, but I was curious as to what the status of that is, and are there plans for council to take any action, or are we waiting for citizens to take action? So that's a fairly straightforward question. Let me move on to my, rest of my things, and I'll let you address these, unless you wish to address them one at a time.
We might as well just go one at a time.
Okay, sure, okay.
No updates at this time.
Has the legal opinion been rendered?
I don't have any updates for you at this time, Mr. Grace. I will say that No Shave November looks good on you, though.
It's a start. Okay. That's fine, we will continue to proceed. I do have some comments on some of the things that were discussed tonight in the study session. The variance for the fuel station at 819 East National Road. If you recall, during some of the discussions on the warehouse issue, there were residents of that, I don't know the name of the street, the first street that's north of that property, that had expressed concern because they had had health issues that were exacerbated by semi-trailers that were parking behind frickers. So I want you to, I know the issue in the zoning is the distance of the 500 or 300 feet from either the property line or the canopies, but consider, as you're looking at that variance, the potential impacts on the residents from the fumes from the Arizona there, as well as the lights and the noise, because as she stated, that is a 24/7/365 operation. So there were known people there with health issues, again, 24/7/365, that's a lot to be asking for something in the back, in your backyard. And it is, if it is a variance, it's your prerogative to approve that, and again, I think you should look carefully at that. Similarly, for the rezoning of the property at 7249 North Dixie. I'm not real familiar with that property, but it is between two apartment complexes, relatively close to those two apartment complexes, and you are looking to change from highway business to industrial, and they are looking at a concrete asphalt manufacturing facility. I'm familiar with Stamps Recycling up there on North Dixie, just north of Old Springfield. I've purchased material from them before. And they got a great spot up there. I'm assuming they just don't have the proper amount of land to handle a recycling facility up there, but before you look at rezoning that, I would think you should consider real greatly the impacts to those apartment complexes that are close, and what is the potential location for the other highway business properties that are, that are in that area as well? Because if you change one to industrial, you're likely going to get more requests for changing others to industrial. And if you haven't noticed it recently, there is a move afoot to have a lot of property within the City of Vandelia zoned industrial. And while I would argue that that is development, I would also argue that it may not be the development that the City of Vandelia really is best suited for. Finally, with the trees along the parkways, I applaud the effort. I'm familiar with both species of trees, as a tree lover. I don't think the maples are going to be quite the purple you think they are. It's a little darker than our, our high school purple, but it's, it's at least a reasonably good selection.
We're going to genetically modify them to get the right hex code.
I would like that, that would be great. As far as the ginkgos go, ginkgos, and I'm sure your person is aware of this, but make sure when you talk with Brown Brothers, because I'm familiar with them, you have this discussion. Ginkgos come as sexed trees, there are male and females. Females produce fruit, and the fruit have a very, very pungent, unpleasant odor. So if you're looking to plant trees in an area where you're going to be having people going for things like the Fall Fest, and they're being walking where there might be fruit on the ground, if you want it to be a pleasant walk, make sure that you get the male trees. I'm not sure how well they can do that. As far as the guarantee goes, I'll tell you, the size of trees you're going to get from Brown Brothers, you'd be hard pressed to kill those in a year. So I wouldn't put too much stock in guarantee. I like Brown Brothers, I've bought a lot of stuff from them in the past, but a year guarantee on nursery stock is pretty, it's a pretty standard, not a serious substantial guarantee. All right. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. You guys have a, Happy Thanksgiving.
Is there anyone else that'd like to make a comment?
If I might, would it be appropriate to ask our Law Director to address one of Mr. Grace's questions regarding the zoning evaluation that's been done, and how that information can be presented, and why we're in a position right now where we...
I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I followed the question, I'm sorry.
Well, we made the comments in prior meetings that we were going to get an evaluation of that property and what options a city may have, and I think the residents, that's what they're looking for, and I know that there's a lot of things being discussed, but what information can we give the public?
Well, I advised council in the executive session of some of the concerns, but that was as far as we've gone at this time. So it's, you know, we don't really have, we haven't received direction or anything like that at this point, so I think it's still something that we're, you as a council are still reviewing, but I have not heard back.
All right. All right, we'll move on to the City Manager's report, where we have some information items.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, a couple of things, you'll see some staff members, including me, that are in jeans, that's because we're doing a drive this week for the Vandelia Butler Food Pantry, and so staff members got to wear jeans. I just want to point out and congratulate Director Leiter and Assistant Finance Director Carnes. They received the, for the annual comprehensive financial report, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association, and so only a very small percentage of communities are actually able to attain this. Vandelia, of course, has a long tradition of financial sustainability, transparency, and full disclosure, and so with these administrative control policies, finance policies that we have, we're very proud of that. The other things that I would like to share with you, city offices, of course, will be closed on Thursday, November 24th, for Thanksgiving, and then also Friday, November 25th, in observance of Thanksgiving. Rec Center will be open on Thanksgiving Day from 7:00 AM until noon. For the fitness area, gym and track, the Rec Center will resume regular hours and schedule on Friday, November 25th. Also, Director Clark is here. I'm so happy to announce that Steve has done it again. He has gotten another grant. This grant is a Nature Works grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. It's $61,000 and change. That is for the accessible restroom at Robinette Park. That's part of the greater plan for that park. It's the fifth-largest grant amount in the entire state, and it's the only one in Montgomery County to get funded, and so our department heads, I think we talk a fair amount about the grants that we got, he got a $100,000 grant recently for Hellkey Park, and so we just keep going after that, and so happy to celebrate that success. That's all that I have for you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 22-R-80. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution approving the General Services Pay Plan for employees of the City of Vandelia, Ohio, for the year 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Oh, I'm totally getting there. The, I recommend that council approve a 2% increases to the General Service Pay Plan pay grades. This matches the 2023 pay grade increases for the union collective bargaining agreements. The update is appropriate and necessary to retain and attract qualified public servants to serve the residents of Vandelia, and this is included in the 2023 budget. I've also included the policy in your packet that goes with it. Two things that I would like to point out, differences from last week, the IT Systems Administrator position was not included in the study session packet. When we had budgeted this for half a year for next year, and so my plan would be, if there are no changes whatsoever in staffing, to hire that around July 1st, and IT Manager Davey, of course, presented on this. The other is the reclassification, moving the IT Manager from pay grade 12 to pay grade 13, in accordance with this policy. I looked at the responsibilities for assets and the likely experience and qualifications necessary for the job. I felt that, based on what I've seen other cities doing, that it was appropriate to recommend and make this change, and so I went through the point factor analysis, again, for this, and then determined that this was the appropriate pay grade, given the job description and the, and the relevant qualifications that have been updated. And with that, I would recommend the passage. One thing that I want to point out on the next item, in the prior meeting, Councilmember Woods had, had brought to light that tipped employees have to make $5 and... Five cents. That was a mistake on the other pay plan, not this one, and so I'll just ask for an amendment on that portion when we present the next item, but not this one.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-80 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Resolution 22-R-80 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-81.
A resolution approving the part-time pay plan for employees of the City of Vandelia, Ohio, for the year 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This proposal includes 2% increases to the pay grade as stipulated in the chart in your packets. The update is appropriate and necessary to retain, retain and attract qualified employees. We are really built on part-time staffing at the city, especially in our Parks and Rec Department, and so this update is very important. I would ask that, prior to the motion, that the minimum wage for the tipped employee for the snack bar attendant beverage cart be amended to, from $4.95 to $5.05, or unless that could just simply be done by saying, make that change after the fact in the motion.
Amended as noted.
Yes, we, typically, we will just say we pass that with that amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution R, 22-R-81, with the amendment of tipped employee to 505.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 22-R-81 with the amendment as noted. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-82. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of water meters and appurtenances from Buckeye State Pipe and Supply Company, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $445,000.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Water meters within the city's utility system have exceeded their useful life and need to be systematically replaced. As of, the existing radio meters and transmitters were installed in 2008, they had a life expectancy of 10 to 12 years. We're beyond that time and starting to see increasing failure in reading capability. So to date, we have 80 meters that we must manually read each month. This, of course, is inefficient. Director Cron and staff have been exploring upgrade options for more than a year. I'm pleased to report that Director Cron and Public Works Superintendent Ritchie have reached a recommendation that I believe will save $800,000 over the course of the project. This, of course, was accounted for in our recent utility rate updates. These savings, I recommend replacing our current meters with the Badger E-Series Ultrasonic Meter, and to purchase up to $445,000 of meters and appurtenances there, too. This fits within the budgeted funds. In addition to be an appropriate product, it functions with our current software and system, which is a cellular network that interfaces with our Beacon software that we just upgraded in 2019. For this reason, I'm requesting moving forward with the purchase from the sole source provider. This new system will read meters four times a day and send a digital signal to our software, advising the city and residents of potential leaks. Utility customers will have access to their account through the Eye on the Water app, through their smartphone or tablet, to track usage and be alerted of potential leaks. Currently, a leak will sometimes run for an entire month before it is detected. This proposal will save money for residents and improve customer service. There will also be an option for remote shut-offs to be installed on meters for repeated delinquent customers, which means that staff can be allocated and directed to work on more productive maintenance assignments, and we plan to have our public works technicians install those meters in-house to save on costs.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-82 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Resolution 22-R-82 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-83.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease for storage of certain city property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city currently has storage space in the former Emory Facility located at 2800 Old Springfield Road. The city property being stored in this space includes items that were previously stored in Fire Station 3 on North Dixie Drive. Our two-year lease on the 5,885 square foot space is set to expire on December 31, 2022. The space is being offered to the city at a lease renewal rate of $2,448.28 per month in 2023, and $2,515.84 per month in 2024. This rate includes all utilities.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 22-R-83 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 22-R-83 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have no ordinances in our first reading. We do have one ordinance in a second reading, that being Ordinance 22-41. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending the City of Vandelia Park and Recreation Fee Schedule.
Thank you, Your Honor. On October 3rd, Director Clark provided information to City Council at the study session relating to Park and Rec Department fees. He provided a historical breakdown and cost recovery analysis, as well as recommendations to update fees for Castle Hills Golf Course, Vandelia Senior Center, Castle Hills Swimming Pool, and the Vandelia Rec Center. At the November 7th City Council meeting, that ordinance was amended, that's 22-41, in the first reading to reflect the new fee schedule for Castle Hills Golf Course only. This ordinance is in its second reading and will approve the new fee schedule for Castle Hills Golf Course only. The Park and Rec Advisory Board will consider fees for Castle Hills Pool, Vandelia Rec Center, and Senior Center at its next meeting, which will likely be in January 2023.
Thank you. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open up a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 22-41 at its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Ordinance 22-41 at its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have a couple emergency ordinances, the first one being Emergency Ordinance 22-42.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Ohio, during the calendar year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the budget ordinance for operating maintenance capital revitalization. Tons of work goes into this, especially by Director Leiter, Assistant Director Carnes, our whole budgeting committee, which also has Assistant City Manager Holloway on it. We also meet with all of the department heads, we go line by line through the budgets, we hold weeks of meetings at a time, and so this is a strategic policy document, it's going to let you accomplish the policy goals and work towards your vision, Vandelia Comprehensive Plan, and so I recommend its passage, and thank you for all of your deliberation during our budget hearings and, and prior council meetings.
All right, thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 22-42 in emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Ordinance 22-42 as an emergency. Are there any comments from council?
I'd just like to echo Mr. Went's comments about how much work goes into this, and this is really the living document that, that we operate with to help the city and spend the dollars correctly for the taxpayers' money, so, thanks for all the hard work, and as well as council, I know we put a lot of time into reviewing what you put together for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any others? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Emergency Ordinance 22-43. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the Finance Director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. This emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts relating to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquents, sewer water, wheat cutting. Thank you.
Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Being now I close the public hearing, can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 22-43 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance 22-43 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next we have reports from boards and commissions, and the first one is a conditional use at 165 North Dixie Drive. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant Curtis Glenn Denning has requested a conditional use permit to allow an animal boarding facility with an outdoor run-play area at 165 North Dixie Drive. The proposed use would include daytime boarding, grooming, training, and retail sales. The use-specific standards for animal boarding with outdoor runs require a setback of 250 feet from any residential, office, residential, and office service districts. The property directly abuts a residential multifamily use. At its meeting on October 25, 2022, Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval with six conditions. And I know that there was some discussion in the prior meeting about maybe another condition being added to that. And so I'll put those up on the screen.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the conditional use at 165 North Dixie Drive with the six conditions recommended by Planning Commission and a seventh condition that no overnight kenneling or boarding of animals will be permitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve the conditional use at 165 North Dixie Drive with the six conditions noted, and also a seventh condition, which is no overnight boarding. Any comments? Just like to say I'm going to abstain from this vote because the applicant representing this property works for my company. Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
No.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And the motion carries five one. Next we have a variance request at 825 Old Farm Court. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant Lifetime Quality Solar has requested a variance to allow six solar panels on the south-facing roof surface facing the public right-of-way on property located at 825 Old Farm Court. Per code, roof-mounted solar panels shall not face a street. These solar panels were installed without a permit early this year. At its meeting on June 8, 2022, the Board of Zoning Appeals issued a split vote of two to two. This item has been deferred multiple times over many months at the request of the homeowner.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the variance request at 825 Old Farm Court.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to deny the variance at 825 Old Farm Court. Any comments?
I'll make a quick comment. Mine is just, you know, we have had multiple of these variance requests. Since I've been on council, we've consistently denied them. I do know and I do believe that we are in need of revising or researching and revising our current zoning regulation on this. And I know that staff has been limited to do such without a city planner on staff. So I'm looking forward to that being one of the policy researches and development and hopefully a recommendation in a quick turnaround period because I think we owe it to our residents to get this situation resolved. But my vote is strictly to be consistent with the other decisions that I voted in the past three years on council on this issue.
I would echo those comments, and in this case, through no fault of the homeowner, we find ourselves in these circumstances, but we can't have very well denied the other and under some similar circumstances denied their ability with the solar panels. And it does bring forth, hopefully Mike can make some sense of this moving forward for both our citizenry and ourselves.
I'll be the third echo. I think we're pretty much all in agreeance that we need to be firm, fair, and consistent. And I'm the first one to be all green. However, I'm not sure, again, the technology is quite there yet that we can allow this. I think there's newer technology out there that can be embedded into the shingles as I've presented before. I think that technology is around the corner. I think, well, it's there now. It's just a little bit more expensive. However, again, I don't think that, in my opinion, from my research, that I've seen where the technology is back as quick as it seems, especially now that DPNL or the ASE has raised the rates, or any of the utilities have raised the rates. And my brother did this out in California, and they promised him five-year payback, ends up being 10-year payback in his sixth year, and so he's looking at 10 years now. But I am for the panels. I'm just not in agreeance with going against our ordinance for this purpose. I would hope that, again, in the future, that we do come up with an equitable solution. And I think then that will open up the gates to others that we've denied, that we will give them an alternative to provide additional panels, I guess, in these situations. Looks like you were going to make a comment.
Any other comments?
Okay. I'm debating whether to say this out loud or not. I really hate to do this, but one of the considerations that I would bring forward to council, understanding that, I actually, in this case, based on our code, straight up denial is the right thing to do. It was also installed without a permit, which is a problem. We encourage everybody to do that. This has also been up since January. Is that right? Yeah, they've been up since January. Council can outright deny this. We know now that we have a city planner, that we're about to revise this. You know, there is an opportunity. I don't know if the, if council would be receptive to tabling this until the ordinance can be looked at. If that would be possible, I know that leaves the applicant out in limbo. Just knowing that we're going to do it and that part of it, part of it honestly is limited staff capacity with a bunch of other things that were happening with planning this summer and then also having the new planner on board. And so I would regret if I didn't put out there that there might be an option to do a good turn by tabling this until it's reviewed. It still might be denied. It still might not be compliant at that time. And so I would just regret if I walked out and didn't say that that's an option that you also have.
Does anyone have any interest in tabling this?
Well, I mean, I guess my question would be if we outright denied it like we have on other incidents, is it just an issue of staff delaying the enforcement of its removal until, or, I mean, would it?
It sounds so ugly when you say it that way.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, that's the outcome of us not approving a variance. I mean, the homeowner would have to remove the structures that were put in without a permit and against the zoning code. So is that something that we can just delay that enforcement? Or is it cleaner and more appropriate to table it?
We would have to come back and approve it then later, would approve or deny later, yeah.
But, I mean, the code could have changed by then, too, and may not require a variance. It may require a different variance. I don't know. I mean, I guess I'm asking the law director for his opinion on that.
Well, currently, we have a motion on the table, so we would have to clean that up. But one thing we don't know is we have a company that's installed this that presumably will take them down. Will they take them down a year from now, like they're willing to do now? I mean, we don't know what that answer is. I mean, there's things that's not within this council's control. But in terms of what you want to do as, excuse me, tabling it or voting on it, that is entirely within council's discretion. The enforcement aspect, you're correct, the zoning enforcement. But, you know, they have a job to do, which isn't to enforce the code. So to selectively enforce it could be problematic.
So I guess my question is, if staff's recommendation is that we table this for further, is that staff's recommendation?
I would feel comfortable tabling it. I'm sorry that I didn't bring this up months ago when I probably had the opportunity to. Honestly, I didn't even think about it until right now. And so I apologize for not having better foresight to advise you on that. I would recommend tabling this, looking at the code, understanding that, hey, there's a chance, but it's already up there. It's been up there since January. We haven't made them take them off before they got the variance approved. There just might be a good opportunity to do a no harm, no foul, and we knew we were going to update it anyway. I guess I wouldn't have a problem in the fact that you take it down and then have to put it right back up if it was approved at a later date, if the ordinance allowed that. I think there's a lot of work and cost involved with that, and I'd hate to impose that on the applicant at this point. I don't see any harm at this point in delaying that, since it's already been a year. And I would be willing to rescind the second.
I'm fine with that. So I will amend my motion and move to table the variance request at 825 Old Farm Court.
Until the second meeting in January.
Until the second meeting of January 2023.
Yeah.
At the city manager's recommendation.
Yeah, we're going to have to, it might even have to get tabled again because, you know, this is going to have to go through Planning Commission and everything else, so. And upon newer.
Should we just go ahead and say March 1, the first meeting of March? The law director shaking his head yes?
Yes, sir. On new evidence, I will second that.
All right. I currently have a motion to table the variance request at 825 Old Farm Court till the first meeting in March. Are there any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero.
Your Honor, real quick, is there a possibility, I mean, I know this is, we're now, staff's going to be looking at this, but can we put a moratorium on issuing solar panel permits until March 1st? Just so that we're not having other residents going back through this?
This didn't have a permit.
Well, not, well, but I guess, can you do a moratorium on variance requests for that specific issue? I just hate seeing us going through these, and residents having to continue to go through this when we know that until we get a change in our ordinance, is that we're probably going to continue to deny these variance requests? Or does that?
Well, I mean, I don't know how you put a moratorium on a variance as opposed to a moratorium on putting on the panels themselves. Technically, someone's supposed to come in and get a permit, at which point staff can say, did you know that you could get denied here?
They can put the panels on within the code. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, obviously, but, so I guess it, okay, fair enough.
I mean, we already have it in place that you can't do it.
And I think that's why we talked, we didn't do a moratorium last time we talked about this because that reason and staff would handle that. But again, the issue was this doesn't have a permit, so otherwise we'd probably been able to notify them until the code changes.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, thank you. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the Board of Zoning Appeal minutes of September 28, the Planning Commission meeting minutes of October 25. Next, we have the October bill listing in the amount of $2,885,715.22. And we also have the September expenses over $50,000 and the September purchase card detail in the amount of $34,826.22. And that brings us to council comments. We'll start with Law Director.
Wait a minute, Your Honor. I just have one question about that bill listing.
What about the bill listing?
Well, there's an item on here that says Underwriters Services Corporation 2022 Claims, $523,000. Are those injury claims? Is that property damage claim? What kind of claims are those?
Underwriters is for health insurance, so it's probably related to health insurance claims.
And it's for the whole year or it's just for the month?
For the period. That's one month, yeah.
One month, okay. Okay, so it's just the month of October. Okay, gotcha.
Remembering the price goes up monthly as the plan year goes on in any organization.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right, thank you. Council comments, we'll start with Law Director McDonald. Mr. Went?
I'd just like to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
All right. Councilman Ayers?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilwoman Fairst?
I have nothing this evening, thank you, though.
Councilman Folick?
Just to echo the city manager's praises on staff, Director Leiter and her staff, and Steve Clark and his staff for the awards that were given out the past couple of weeks. I think it's important to highlight on the financial award that we've obtained that for 32 consecutive years. So that's a huge achievement for our finance department over multiple department directors that that reporting continues to meet that standard. That is a good run at that award. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank residents and Vandelia voters who supported the electric and gas aggregation issues back on Election Day. I think it's just the first step in a process, but overwhelmingly passed. I think they both passed at 71% of voter approval, which seemed to be the trend amongst all those issues in the county. I mean, we were one of many cities that had aggregation issues on the ballot. But I know that staff and council will start to look at those issues and see if we can negotiate more favorable rates in the future for those two utilities. I had to have one request to that issue, and that would be, I know the website had information regarding educational information on the issue as we were headed into Election Day. So I'm not sure that we can kind of transition that to kind of a, what's the next steps? What are we going to do next?
That's in draft form right now.
Okay, great, because I think that's something that residents, and we can keep that updated as we move through that process. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blakesley?
Looking forward to the tree lighting ceremony and Holiday Market taking place at the Vandelia Rec Center December 4, and 4 to 7:30, and the tree lighting is at 6, I believe. Okay, I would be there. And happy Thanksgiving to all.
All right, Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, and the only comment I have is just, again, wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And this is really the kickoff for an exciting few weeks of celebration and getting into the new year. So we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. We're going to take a short break. We will then finish up our items remaining on the study session. Then we will come back and do our executive session, and there is no vote or outcome.
We'll do the executive session as part of the study session, so this meeting's.
All right.